Two.
Coming. There you go.
All right. Calling the meeting of the facilities committee to order. And I know we're going to be having some people here for public comment. But they are not here yet. So I'd like to move to approval of minutes from the last meeting. Um, that we had on December twentieth. Any comments on we?
Well, I would have to abstain because I was not here.
Oh, no, we're in trouble. I guess we'll have to postpone the approval of the minutes from December twentieth. Next on our agenda, we have a progress report. From Travis Rander.
Yes, construction, yep.
Excellent.
Yep. Um. So. Uh. So Phase One work, we are, it is basically wrapped up, uh, work actually complete. We have closed out of the, of the contractor's contract with in progress. Um, but that's kind of it there. We also had the high school roof project completed fall. We're actually just finished up a little bit of work yesterday or was the last remaining work. We have closed out those projects also, those projects also in progress.
Okay.
Hello.
For each other.
Just give them that for now, I just started. Great relief, sorry. Um. So we also have a middle school temperature control upgrade for both middle schools. That work is also substantially complete. Um. We're currently undergoing a commitmenting, performance testing of the, of the new equipment. Um, and will likely have, uh, we still have. Final punch list to do of that, there might be a little bit of work involved in that. Uh, but that nearing that as well. Phase two is our main, uh, project that we're undergoing right now. Um, so I'm gonna give a brief update for each of the locations we have going on for phase two minutes. I mean, area of construction right now. Um. This end field, we have work going on or we have. Part of scope for this, uh, phase, but currently there's nothing going on there, uh, not expected till next spring.
So the boiler, the boiler situation is all taken care of?
Yeah, we put it, we put a temporary boiler in for one of the old boilers that failed. While we're waiting for the geothermal to do, will be completed next summer, yeah. It's correct. Um, and that was actually completed in, in December. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, November. It's completed in November, that work. Um, at LACS, uh, we have some work still lingering in the, the bathrooms, the toilet room. Um. Lights are in progress being installed. Uh, we're still waiting on some material, including the permanent fire alarm devices. Um. And indoors. Those items are long lead. Uh, at the main entry addition, the steel is, is up, that's erected and around the side, the black box theater, we have some steel going up. Uh, is in progress of being erected right there. Uh, spite lighting on the north side of the, the site. Was, uh, completed, uh, in December as well. So that's LACS. Uh, for Duett, um, we still have some work remaining in the third toilet rooms, um, doors there as well. Also, there was, uh, some new heating units that got added. Um. Still waiting on those. Uh, we also have, I'm going to work in the auditorium, uh, currently they're working on floors and ceilings in there. So, um, kind of starting finishing, so that, that's good, um. We do have some long lead items that's gonna push the completion of that. Path, so we're intending to turn that over in March and do it auditorium. Um, it will be usable as an LGI by the end of March. But as far as for performances, there's stage rigging and some specialty lighting, it's long lead. It will get in once, so that'll be more in the spring before that's completed.
And what is an LGI?
Uh, large group instructed, yeah, so it's a multi, multi-use base. Kind of auditorium, also LGI at, at Duett Middle School. Um. So that's the update for Duett, um. South Hill, they also have, uh, quite a bit of active construction going on. Um, steel erection is in progress at the main entry addition there. Uh, it's. Mainly up, they're working on metal roof decking currently. Um. Interior spaces are. Uh, all roughed in, they're kind of waiting for finishes. There, um, so that's expected. Um. Later on this spring as well. Uh, for completion and then we have site work and kind of the tie-in of the site work to the new entry addition that'll occur, uh, next summer there. Uh, for the high school, we started working in the high school since December, um. Area G toilet room, we actually started working on them a little early because we could. Um, and it was, and we decided it was good to get those done as soon as we could. To get those, um, you know, the new renovated bathrooms to be used so that we could. Um, so demos kind of complete there and we're starting to rough in, fade layout and building of walls in their, uh. G, uh, toilet rooms. Uh, so that's kind of all the, uh, construction that we have going on for phase two. Uh, looking a little bit forward, we have phase three A, which is the end field roof. We're going to re, uh, bid that to the PIPs program, uh. Really, as soon as possible, probably late month or, or early next month. Get that back out and that roof may go this summer or depending on material delivery, maybe put still next summer. Uh. As material delivery, we necessitate that. Um, also looking forward a little bit, uh, face three A two, which is renovation at BJM exterior. And canopy that end field, uh, we just got SBD approval for those, uh, beginning of this month. And we're looking to get bid out for them early next month. Um. So that's, that's kind of where we are from, from version standard, right?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, to the LACS folks, we're gonna have you up in just a few minutes, I'd like to complete a couple of reports from staff first.
Now, will we get a copy of that, will that be uploaded into? Or down?
The one that Travis just gave me?
Yeah, it was kind of rough notes, I, I certainly can, there, it's, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get the more official report, right? Cindy usually does that, you know, they're like, oh, like a month.
Yeah.
But that's typical, but yes, Cindy, to get those with that as well.
Yeah, I, I think that would be the more, the better one.
Okay, that's great. Chris, did you want to add anything about phase three, you're on the agenda? You don't have to, but you may.
If there are questions, I'm happy to, I know we just talked about it.
Does seem like we're just.
If you have any questions, I'm happy, I don't know. Talk about things.
Nope.
Okay.
And I think we're all set.
Alright.
Very good. Okay. And that brings up Heather for an update.
I'm going to pop up the, the slide, Travis, I want to apologize, I came a little hot, unaware that I interrupted your presentation.
Oh, no, no problem, no problem.
So, um, I think if we need to scoot forward to January's slide. And that'll get it in the, um, I'm glad the LAC, uh, LACS folks are here, uh, the, the top mentioned is. At the triangle picture, it's a little hard to see, this is a picture I took of G today for our walls, who is their, uh, lead custodian? And, um. I just wanted to, uh, remark on that connection that with facilities, we're trying to, uh, maintain and clean spaces for teaching and learning. And one of the, um, maybe the things that might not be on everyone's radar is that, uh, when we are able to work closely with our construction folks. Oftentimes they're, they're working around the clock and they're working weekends and days off. When, when the school might be empty, really to put these projects going, what that means for G is that, um, before that students come in, uh. On a weekend, whereas other, other folks might come into their building and it's relatively undisturbed from how clean they left it. On a Friday or Saturday, um, the first thing he has to do is get a floor machine and get that, uh, you know, the, the constant, um. Construction dust, and in the conversation I had today with him, just walking through. Not a single complaint, it is joyful work for him to repair his building for teaching and learning. Even though he acknowledged it really adds to the challenge because there's mud coming in in places that didn't used to be mud. And there's dust, um, it doesn't matter if you just cleaned it, it's gonna be dusty and dirty again. And, uh, he said it kind of, you know, it reminded me of when I used to clean when my daughter was a toddler. And I realized it's only gonna be cleaned for five minutes, so I'm just gonna enjoy those five minutes. And, um, you know, for G, his comment was, this is only temporary and it's gonna be so great for kids. He's like, I don't mind this for now, and I just thought, man. Like, that's, that's such a, a great, uh, attitude to carry forward, um, we work with our facility staff. And part of what we're trying to maintain is that we're really the, in many ways, the director of first impressions, uh, from the interior and the exterior. Of our building and creating these teaching and learning spaces, and I thought that, um, you know, I just wanted to introduce you all. G, terrific, thank you. Yep, uh, the, the, the picture below G is a, the, the blue circle with a X through it. And this is an unexciting picture of, uh, bushes being trimmed back at the appropriate time in the winter. Um, so we've noticed aesthetically, we're trying to up our game in that, um, the first thing that. We want people to notice when they pull into our spaces is how they look and we want to be modeling, um. How, you know, how in personal lives can folks also like, what should their spaces at home maybe, you know, what they want to shoot for, so. That is the work of, uh, Steve Kellerman, again, who did a great job. To the right of that and that purple smiling face, that is our, to my knowledge, that it was first, um, she identifies as female. Uh, Marissa Donovan is our first maintenance worker. Um. That is, that's, that's a woman and she is up in the tennis courts removing the conduit, so. Again, that teamwork of what can we do in-house on our own to get ready for big things for kids, so, um, you know, working on that to remove that. The plan right now is to use, repurpose the old tennis court fencing, um, so that we are in, uh, greater compliance underneath. Leakers to use it for storage and to, to move that fencing. Um, below that, you have the, kind of a red pack or a yellow Pac-Man, sorry, that is, that's Rick Barber. Uh, he is the head custodian at End Field. He's in a cafeteria because today he was actually, um. In addition to cleaning the space while the kids eat, he helps them with some of the trickier things such as, um, condiments, um, and straws. And it is the little things and one of the things, uh, I know it's like Rick's building has been in and out of construction and. You know, things are a little bit torn up, but one thing that was really nice, uh, about him is that in the time that he and I spent together today. He greeted every single child by name, he know which one wanted a chocolate milk, who likes this straw, who doesn't like this straw, who? And, and just to see that personal relationship and to see, um, how he is blending the work that he does to augment the experience, uh, of the children.
That was very wonderful.
Uh, have we, do we still have those little plastic pouches of milk or did we get rid of those years ago?
I, it's been. I, I have not seen any milk pouches, uh, here on this campus, I've only seen cartons.
I just remember how crazy that was when we were doing that.
Yeah.
The pouches, remember those, though?
Yeah.
I think I do.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
Yeah. The last little picture, the red lightning bolt is outside, um, our BJM campus and we are having a difficulty, um. I, I think as neighborhoods change, then, uh, sometimes you have to learn how to be good neighbors. And one of the, one of the, uh, pain points we were experiencing there is that people were parking in that alley alongside BJM. Uh, because it didn't used to be a place where people needed parking and now it is, or they perceive it, and the problem it was creating is that. We're unable to access our dumpster, one, and two, it, it's not a very safe thing to have, uh, vehicular traffic in the area where children are. And this was a collaboration between Jackie Richardson and Brendan Miller, who was our crew chief, and they really thought about like. How do you, how did you communicate that you don't want a car there? In a polite way, one, one that's not, you know, alienating your new neighbors and, um, communicating safety, so they kind of, um. They thought long and hard, they said, well, it's really just not an area for vehicles and that's, that was the end of it, but. It was a nice collaboration between student safety and, um, our grounds crew.
Is that, is that the entrance from Buffalo Street or from the other side?
Uh, this is, this is, so the building on the left is the brand new construction building?
Buffalo Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
School is on the bar.
Yeah, and then you can't really see in the back is the dumpster and then if you go past the dumpster to the right, that's how you exit the playground, yeah. So just an attempt again to be a good neighbor and to keep our kids safe. And to communicate what we need to communicate in a polite manner.
Can, can you tell us what the sign says, cause I can't read from here, I'm like, well, good, I think.
No vehicle's gone, no vehicle beyond this point.
Thank you.
Okay, nice and clear.
Yeah, alright, so that, that's what they came up with. Thanks. That's a nice flex.
I'm just not happy that I can't park here anymore.
Oh, that's funny. It's not.
Any, any questions? Thank you, once again.
Happy to, thank you.
Yeah. Next, I'd like to go to the public, um, comment and presentation from the Green New Deal folks from LACS. Uh, I'm not sure how you want to handle this, did you want to stand up one by one and say something, or did you want to present a group? Statement?
I'm here and I'm here for.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Since we demanded the Green New Deal for ours. Since we demanded the Green New Deal for ICSD, we have seen much improvement. The first climate summit was successful and a committee is currently being formed. We are proud to hear that ICSD got an electric bus and will continue to get more. While composting has gotten started, there are still many steps to take. ICS has restarted composting as well as two other schools. But there are still many schools that have not started at all. So. Hi, I'm Zoe. Even though we have, we are restarting compost schools, they're still producing a lot of unnecessary waste such as lunch trays and utensils. We don't have a sufficient amount of composting, making composting inconvenient for students and staff. While our demands are being met to some degree, we have not seen any work towards becoming solar power. What are the steps the district is taking to become solar and what is the district doing to start, restart composting for all of the schools?
My name's Taliyah and here are some reasons of, um, here are some reasons I research for why solar should be good for artistry. Better access for hands-on learning, healthier and cleaner air and environment. Cheaper, eco-safe for the planet. And I just root this larger, it'd be perfect to place. It'd be a perfect place to hold many solar panels, I think this is a very smart idea and what. Uh, and it would help fix many problems in our schools.
Very nice, thank you for coming, Dr. Brown. I know we have, we have some more information on electric buses, I don't know if Dr. Brown or anyone else has information regarding. Additional composting in other schools or plans for solar panels at this point?
I think they can talk to a bunch of things, that's, do you have some time? You want us to sort of answer some of maybe the things that you highlighted, maybe what we're doing and then, um. Give me some ideas of what we're looking forward?
Okay.
Great, great, um, so why don't we, do you want to start with sort of the daily operations and then we can do some of the construction like at End Field?
Sure.
Then a transportation?
Yeah, Heather.
Yeah.
Jump into, um, you know, one thing I want to say is I, I also look at food service and starting. Um, in the next two weeks, they're gonna go to plastic trays that they can wash using a dishwasher machine they have there. Yeah, so that's something that we're trying to pilot to expand. Uh, we have two schools that are, that are using silverware right now, those are things that we're trying to pilot as well as in food service. So those are a few things that I wanted to add. Um. I, I, uh, yeah, we have a lot to add about e-buses and stuff, but I think it might be good to share, Heather, if you want to share some updates on composting as well.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Yeah.
I'm Heather and I've been looking into the, uh, some of the composting, uh, questions that you brought up and some possible combinations. Um, I think one of the things that I found out in the process is that, um, our, one of our partners that receives our compost. It's their business and they make money from doing that, and so the. Their standards for what they can sell as compost are different than like what I would compost at my house. And I think that, um, my, my learning was that there's, um, there's, everyone's coming in saying I'm composting. But for the people, our vendor, we can only compost. What they need us to, and that they're getting a lot of contaminated, I think when we first got together, um, that was one of the problems, like, well, why is our, you're working to compost, why is it going to be dumped? Um, and the answer is that our, our vendor couldn't use what we were doing and their suggestions was, um. When I, when I spoke with them, Mary, uh, is, you know, gave me the advice that. If, if it don't wants to successfully compost, I can do, right? That just act like preschool of all our schools. We should start with just. Lunch trays and food. That's it. Because the, the confusion seems to happen with this type of paper and this type of can, napkins, we can, napkins, or sand. Because people, um, they're good composting for maybe their life experience is different than what we need for this vendor. So, uh, that's piece of information that I got moving forward is that we should dial back and just say, just trays and food right now. Uh, food waste from kitchens and food scraps and then, uh, compostable trays for schools that are still using them. I know that, um, a guest at our event fall, yeah, and all my words failing me today.
Climate Summit.
Climate Summit, okay, thanks, um.
She came to us and was, she was zero waste typical, was very excited, um, she participated in and worked with Beth to write a brand. Uh, and that I think is what is behind the, you know, the, the dishwasher and the trays. So it was that partnership and introduction that got things going there. So we're kind of two-pronged that where, where we are using compostable trays, we're gonna compost them. My, my question, I think, for follow-up is, um. Need to, I think, revisit ideas to make this a district-wide thing, like what is, what's a little piece that every administrator, every custodian, every student? And, and all our facilities folks. Can, can agree on that smallest bite. We are looking at, um, I'm working with Alan, he is my counterpart at Bozies. And we are looking on a march, I think he worded it as a hard relaunch of district-wide composting. So our, our partners at Bozies and then the, uh, adults are in, while are working on a march target for district. All limited to raising food. Our most successful one, um, that's not a hard line and I will feedback for that, I know that we all just want this to be a successful thing, we want it to be good. Um, if there's anything that I missed, yes, I will.
Um, so.
So. Sorry.
So, put in compost that takes.
Well. Some, right? They can take some, the, the problem is I. I think the problem that we're experiencing is that. If one, if one thing ends up in our compost, it contaminates all of it. So the only surefire way right now that Mary really felt comfortable sharing with me. She said that, that right now our, our understanding and execution aren't matching what they need. So we're not, um, able to partner with them in a way that they wanted, so she, that was her suggestion. I would say that as we increase our learning over time, then we can build up and include those other elements, um. But because they are using it as a business, they have to be clean compost and we want to eliminate that frustration of. Working to compost and have it compost directly to a landfill. Um. So. Um, our, our vendors are, like, when we buy things, right, when we buy paper towel, we buy toilet paper. We do check to make sure, hey, is this not possible, who can it work with? So the products that we have are good, but right now there's a misunderstanding, so things are getting in that shouldn't. Is that more clear or worse? Sometimes I do both.
Clarify, it's, I'm talking about like the paper towel, the public bathroom, the brown one, like the white ones.
I can, I think the answer, I think the answer at this point is they're gonna start with the trays and the food. And then with any luck, ramp up to include other things, so.
As we grow in our understanding, yeah, we just, I think that the stumbling block is, um, we've ironed out the pickup part, that was a stumbling block with Bozies. But we haven't ironed out the contamination part and this is their suggestion for how we can be, um, a supplier that they can use. And, and give it compost. Chris, thanks.
Yeah, something, um, my name's Chris, I'm an architect, you know, I work for a company that works a lot with the district and we're really happy to be involved with a lot of the. The things that the district is doing. One of the, um, sustainability goal of, of stream analysis is, is a thing called a waste stream audit, that I'm sure you'll perform one of those. It can be like a fun event, you, basically you take all your garbage, spread it out on the floor, you go through it. You figure out what it is, is how much, what is in there. By weight, by material, and that gives you some raw data in terms of like, what are we, what are we producing? Right, and then you can, you know, do some math and, and figure out, well, here's how much we're diverting to this spring. Composting program, for example. These are things that maybe you could divert, you reset. It just, it gives you some clue to. Figure out whether this you want to do.
Thank you, Chris. Nice project, I gave.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Getting all of your students and. And staff ready for that.
I actually don't know, I don't know all the moving parts, I think that I have to reach out, uh, more, uh, for some counsel. On that, um, that because of the newness of my position, I'm not sure what's already been done. Um, I want to make sure that I'm checking with administrators and students, both unions, and coming up with something that's, that's gonna work. So our, our March target is a target. And I'll know more after I meet with Alwyn.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, a great mentor. Yeah, Brian. And so I am surrounded by lots of talent.
Okay. Uh, let's talk a little bit about electric buses.
Sure, yeah. Okay, okay, yeah, alright, so, uh. Brett, Hetra Tech and Chris and Amanda, Chris and Anna, um, and Amanda, we've all been working together and we have a, a multi-phase approach. We have, uh, stage one A, which we will be talking more tonight in finance. Uh, but the first stage is really to purchase two portable bus chargers to install them. Provide the power, which is, is gonna be pretty easy apparently with the, um, existing electrical panel that's already out there. And we're excited, this is, um, the electrical work is something that we can move on fairly quickly. Um, as well, we also have, I think for the first phase, one A, we had, uh, two electric buses, uh, proposed and that would be. Uh, that's contingent on the proposition and, and some information we'll share later at the finance committee, and I know Amanda will be sharing that. But in stage one B, we'll be looking at three additional buses and then of course we'll be looking at installing more power. Cause then we'll be up to five electric buses, um. We, we believe that a lot of the electrical, uh, can be fed, uh, from existing service that's. uh, from existing service that's already in the building. Chris, maybe you want to talk a little bit about um, uh, one A and one B in a little bit more depth.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
So when, yeah, obviously when you are plugging a, a pretty large thing into a, a building's facilities, you need to figure out where that electricity is going to come from. Cause the original building wasn't, wasn't designed to have that much. Um, almost just to be flowing through. So when um, and when we're talking about, I think ninety or so school buses, they're big things. So it's a lot of electricity that needs to be added to get that whole amount of charging to be able to have it. Uh, so what we're, what we're starting to do is to figure out um, in the near term, because a couple of buses are kind of, they're going to come soon. So um, our electrical engineer, Anna, got out there and is figuring out how to be able to plug a few in in the near term. Uh, probably four or so. Um, and it's interesting because we're taking uh, electrical, electrical supply that's going to the, your diesel buses. And diesel buses have a thing called a, a block here. Basically, you plug in a diesel bus, the engine port. And so we're able to say, well, you're not going to need those anymore because now you have electric buses. You don't need this thing. So we're going to reuse some of those, some of that electrical capacity instead to plug the buses in. So we're trying to do as much of that as we can in the near term quickly. Um, to stay ahead of the, the amount of buses that the district is planning to get. They're really like trying to do it as quickly um, as we reasonably can. And then um, we'll have a bigger project later that uh, we'll get the power company out and they have to do, you know, a, a bigger amount of work to get all night here, this on. So it's a couple of different efforts uh, in order to, to uh, to find that power. Any questions?
So we, we have a lot of planning that goes into just the transportation facility, right? So one of our, to get to the solar piece, I will tell you, one of the things that we would love to do and we are hoping to be maybe one of the first school districts to do this is to explore the possibility of having um, you know, solar covering that a bus could pull under, almost like a parking bay, right? Um, those are really popular in states like Massachusetts and other places. You see them all over the place. Um, I, we've been talking a lot about that as a possibility. That's not going to happen tomorrow. It's not going to happen next year, right? Um, in fact, you all might be closer to graduating high school. If you are right now, let's do it because it takes a lot of time and planning, but that is something that we're really serious about because we don't want it to pass and have like more electric from the grid. We want to actually try to create a space, right? Where an opportunity where we can get power from the sun into that system to charge our buses. We think that would be really an amazing project for us to move forward. And so there's um, we're, we're going to be exploring those opportunities. We're also looking at all of our buildings. Every time that we're trying to think about the way that we heat or cool them, right? How can we do it better? How do we have less of an impact on our environment? So for example, did they go to Enfield Elementary School? No one went to Enfield? So you know that we have an elementary school in Enfield, right? A bunch of kids go there and, and they have a really old heating system. Like super old, like old boilers that use like fossil fuels, right, to, to power them. And we're getting rid of all that. We're actually going to be using a geothermal. So we're going to be using the power of the earth, right, to heat and cool our buildings. Um, and so that project, we actually drilled a ton of um, of wells to get, capture that energy, right, from, from the ground to be able to keep a consistent temperature in that building and that's going to be converting the summer. That's a really, it's very similar like heat pump system. Some of you might have those in your own homes and things, right? We're going to be doing that. Um, and we're halfway there, which is really exciting. And then um, in the high school, right, we spent a lot of money on electric, like to try to um, run uh, heating and cooling. And we're actually going to be tapping into the lake source, which is what Cornell uses, right? So that's again, a natural resource that has a temperature control mechanism to it to be able to cool and, and warm our buildings. That's going to be really exciting for us as well. And those are all things that we can do that uh, really utilize less fossil fuel, but harness or this power that we have, like the sun, like the lake, right, like the ground and our earth. So those are really exciting opportunities as well. So those are things that are kind of happening now in future. So I do more of like the capital project and future big picture stuff. Um, I was able to work with a lot of uh, your uh, fellow students, federal, maybe a little bit older on planning all the capital work that's happening at your building right now, um, and meeting with you. And I was really fortunate enough to be able to be part of the planning team and process for um, the summit. So I look forward to continuing to meet um, with your wonderful teachers and then with all of you too. So I will absolutely be a member of that committee. You just give me a call and we'll continue to work forward thinking. Um, Dan and Heather, they work the daily operations, the every day, right? But we'll, we'll support them as well through the budget. So if there's something that you find exciting and you need a little support and you want to put that into the budget and say, gee, we'd really like to explore this, I can help you with that too. Okay, um, so you got, I think, some really exciting um, opportunities with this Green New Deal. We do hold ourselves accountable. Um, we really take this really seriously. I met with you, like trying to get to, to all solar by twenty twenty-five. I've owned it. I, I can't, we can't do that as a district, right? But we can definitely think about ways to harness solar. Like we, when we can do it, we will, right? If we're um, if we're doing additions and we're able to kind of hold the load of what solar panels might be on a building, we'll try it out. We can get them on the side of a building, we'll try it out. If we can explore places like campuses up in Dandy or South Hill or wherever, where we can maybe put a couple of panels and try to load into that building and support that building, we'll try it out. Um, and, and we'll try to get to guests everywhere we can, but we'll also be really honest with you when we don't know if we can actually get there. In the, in this, like in, in one way or another, but try to get creative about it. Okay, so it'll be a give and take of information. That's what I can promise you. All right?
Thank you, Will Dr. Brown.
Yeah, of course.
But I'm trying to make great. Yeah, so I'm, I'm from campus, so we're doing the construction management. I have a lot of the construction going on throughout the district. Um, also, I want to remind uh, everyone, so LACS yet is also getting a living roof and a living wall.
That's true.
Actually for carbon capture and it makes a flat, flat heap. So that's, that's a really uh, a green technology that we use in construction too. Um, yeah, and like Amanda said, the, the geothermal at Enfield, that can't be understated. That's, that's a really huge thing.
Um, when we hear that, when you hear about decarbonizing buildings, like your school, that school will be decarbonized.
And just so you all know, when the people in the subject, uh, she was part of the group that went to meet with the architect and we talked about the green.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Same group, new generation.
I love it.
Yeah, and you'll, and you'll see that.
Can I see a show of, nobody is here from Enfield evidently. Is there anyone from Fall Creek? Two from Fall Creek. How about Caroline? Belle Sherman?
I think so.
Okay. Good, Northeast. You guys? All right.
All right.
Yeah, you can claim as many schools. Excellent.
Outhill?
It's South Hill. All right, thank you. I'll see if you figure out who's here.
Anyone from BJM? That's an elementary school. No? You got to fix it.
So Dr. Trump, if I may, how can we, I have a question for all of you. As students, how can we help communicate and give you information about the work that's happening? Because a, a lot of times it happens at these meetings, right? And, and I think that getting that messaging to the students where I think we can always do better. So like what are, do you have any ideas about ways that we could maybe create a better opportunity? Um, to share? Yeah.
When we did the summit, there were a lot of students. So we talked about it there, a lot of students from the schools.
Right, and I think also, I think your point's great, like hearing from other students in other buildings. Cause then you get ideas and then you also can like kind of maybe go and visit and learn from them, right? They can like mentor you on this and you can mentor them. So that's a great idea. Yeah.
Um, I don't know if you guys have some sort of like anything, notes that are taking or like sort of summary of what was done in the years, but maybe if we had some sort of like way to put all those notes, something that we could share like throughout the district with students and across.
It's online.
Okay, okay, but we have to, I think, make that one click to get it.
Yeah.
All right.
Then you'll have to go through it and see what's relevant and let's see what's not, of course, but. Oh, yes.
There came from Sophia, the student who was able to hear, uh, with a high schooler who has been part of the summit group for a long time and she uh, she was thinking it would be cool that, I think it came up in our meeting, to like have some sort of like website or page on the ICSD website that was like ICSD's Green New Deal. I just had like the geothermal and the E-bus is just like all of the things. It's collective and a little more accessible than the minutes for the board meeting so that our board will, the taxpayers could read it.
That's a work for our communication scheme. I worry they don't have enough to do, Dr. Brown.
I was hoping that this would just give them the ideas, right?
All right.
But Amanda, can you share, how do we get from this point to the buses and everything, all the proposition?
Oh, sure. Right, so, so some of the work, so um, when Mrs. York is asking me to share, it's sort of like, how, how, how do we um, get the funding to do all this, right? Cause obviously you all know that um, there's, we have to, we employ a lot of people. We make sure that you have supplies and materials, right? We make sure that like the buses are running and the food is purchased and all of those things, right? And so then everything that we do that might be different from what we've always done, right? Either we have to take monies that we've been spending on the things that no longer work or aren't good for our environment and repurpose them, right, into things that are better for our environment and better choices, right? Um, and new behaviors. So that's one way. We can either actually stop doing something and then just take that money and put it into a, a budget code. We can actually ask the taxpayers in Ethica when we go out to the budget, right? We can highlight certain things in our budget and say, this is going to go for this purpose, X, Y, and Z. And um, we do that in a lot of ways. We can have it as nor, our normal budget, right? So you might have monies that are just dedicated to LACS to help you on particular projects. Um, you might have things that are district-wide to support um, Heather and the facilities team on doing composting better. We might actually think about ways that we could support food service, right, with materials and supplies to actually um, do their work better. And then we have opportunities what that are called um, like propositions that are in addition to the budget. So the budget is a proposition itself. And what you're going to see if your parents get the newsletter and look for it, you'll get a newsletter in the mail. There'll be information about proposition, other propositions. So there's going to be a proposition number two, right? So proposition number one is the budget. Proposition number two is spending from a savings account that we've set aside. It's called the capital reserve. Capital is a word that schools use often for like infrastructure, like buildings and grounds and transportation, right? The sort of like the things that support learning, right? On the physical buildings or the physical things that get us to and from school. And in proposition two, that's where you're going to see information about all of the e-buses. Okay, so the electric buses. And so you're going to see that we're going to be asking the voters to actually um, allow us to spend money from this savings account that we set aside to purchase five e-buses. And to also make sure that when we plug them in, there's power, right?
Yes.
We want to make sure that when we plug them in, we don't have like a whole brown house that's that area in city, right? We want to make sure that like there's actually power that's going to be able to charge them. So that's what you're going to see in proposition two. Okay, and so um, you know, I can also, I'm happy to come. I've done a lot of your meetings, right, your all-school meetings. Um, I'm familiar with ASMs and I'm happy to come on out and chat about those areas of the budget that specifically pertain to all of these items. Too. All right?
Thank you very much. Uh, I think other than um, agenda setting for the next meeting, I think we're done for today. And does anyone have anything that they want to see on the agenda other than the usual things next month? If so, they should speak now or send me or Amanda
I.
An email.
Yeah, so one thing that I would like to mention, I know we chatted about um, trying to invite building um, principals back again. Each time we're kind of looking at their buildings through the facilities uh, planning document lens that Tetra Tech pulls together. It's a living, breathing document. We're always adding, you know, checking boxes if we achieve something. Um, we also like Dr. Lobek to come and uh, do an introduction who is, yes, so um, it goes to be the one to Fall Creek Elementary School. We're going to be engaging the community about what of that playground is unsafe and what of that playground we, slowly need to keep because it's so iconic and amazing, right? And so we're going to do both the, both and planning, but the students at Fall Creek and the community of Fall Creek are going to be the planners of that playground. And so Dr. Lobek and Tetra Tech are going to help us make sure that we have a full engagement around that so that we keep all the beautiful elements of that playground and also give it the revival that it needs, safe and fun and awesome. Okay, so that's one thing that we'll have on the agenda. All right, next time. Dr. Lobek was planning to come here. Unfortunately, she had an injury today and so um, she will be here.
Very good.
Will she go to Fall Creek first, Tetra Tech and everyone go there?
So we would like to introduce her to all of you here at facilities and that will be happening all at the same time. Yep, so, so there'll be, we're already started a plan with Mary and, and Caitlin. Um, Ms. Graham, right, to be able to, to roll these out. That is going to be happening actually soon, very, very soon. But we wanted to make sure that here was a, also a venue that we could chat about that.
Sounds good. Um, thank you, LACS folks. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. And the meeting is adjourned. Enter.